Okay, good evening. Welcome to the October 11th, 2022 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, we'll open tonight's meeting and read the public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. For announcements tonight, all I really have is, I just want to sort of acknowledge and thank the Hatfield Firefighters Association and Hatfield Fire Department for the bonfire that was held this weekend. It was, as usual, just a really great event, and I know how much work goes into all of that. And we appreciate, you know, what a good time they show Hatfield and the people from out of town who came in. So we appreciate how much work goes into it and how safe they make that event.
Oh, as far as the firefighters, it's October, so check your smoke detectors, change your batteries, and Halloween's coming. Be careful how you drive with the kids out there. So those are my announcements.
All excellent points. Excellent points. Okay, so anyone here for public forum? No. So we have, let's see, approval of minutes?
Make a motion to approve Suckboard Minutes, September 22nd, 2022, at 5:30 PM.
A second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our first topic of business, which was going to be discussing and review reviewing Hatfield's electricity aggregation program with Colonial Power Group, has been postponed to November 9th?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna skip right over that one. Topic two is, our town clerk is here with us tonight, and we have two agenda items. Lydia, come on up.
Very quickly, you should have a letter in your packet, which is a recommendation to the Community Preservation Committee to, in support of preserving some old birth records that I have, which are from 1896 to 1928 approximately. This is like the third round of vital records that I found when I got here that were really, really old and just sitting in cardboard boxes. So I'd like your support in pursuing that application to the CPC.
I think it's great.
I make a motion to support the town clerk's Community Preservation Committee, preservation of old birth records.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No. Thank you for making sure the documents are kept up.
Well, somebody just said, "How often do you use them?" I just had a lady the other day asking for something from 1915, and I was able to send her a copy of the original birth certificate, so she was thrilled.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
So thanks. Now, does this put them onto some kind of...
No, they're bound in a book.
Okay, so it doesn't digitize them?
No, like the rest of us. We've had discussions about that, but we'll...
Someday.
Yeah.
I, you know, when I used to work here years ago, have sat down with some of the old records, and they're just fabulous.
We get compliments all the time.
Yeah, they're really great.
From people that research it.
You can go way back.
How well they're preserved and how far back they go.
I mean, there's names in there that people still live here.
It's pretty cool.
It's really great.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for doing that, Lydia. Okay, so then the next item is the election warrant for the November 8th election. I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. You're just asking us to...
Sign it so I can get it posted.
We have to vote it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the November 8th, 2022 election warrant.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lydia, I know there's early voting, but on actual election day, what are the hours of the polls?
It says right there on your warrant.
It does. You're right.
Seven eight.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah, there it is. Seven AM to 8 PM.
Seven AM to 8 PM.
Ed, you need to sign that.
Yeah.
Easy enough. Lydia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, oh, sure. And do you want to take this, too? I didn't know if Karen needed it for anything.
I just need copies. I need copies of certificates. Can you just throw them in my mailbox? Oh, yes.
Okay. Great. So next, topic three is a discussion around improvements to Day Pond. So we have some folks here from Hatfield Fish and Game, right? Would you like to come up to the, do you want both to come up to the microphone? Michael, come on, don't be shy.
I'm the president.
Oh, Michael's the president?
No, no, you go.
Oh, my God.
Come on up. Come on up. Give him some moral support.
Okay, we heard that there's a possibility we could get some money for the town to improve the Day Pond, which is part of Smith Academy's property. And it would be really good because the water's shallow there, and we have a fishing derby in the spring for the kids there every year. But the problem is, the water's too shallow. The dam really has to be worked on a little bit. We need an oxygenator to keep the trout alive, otherwise they just die during the summer. There's not enough oxygen in the water. And it would be a good place for kids to go fishing throughout the year. Kapewalk could, you know, utilize it maybe. There's always ducks in there, and I guess they're putting a walkway around Smith Academy. Maybe a bench or two in there where people could go, and even you could use it for skating in the wintertime.
I could, I'd like to back up, too, with the president. The hope is for Day Pond with the Fishing Game was hoping that the pond, now at UMass, what they did with the pond was they dredged it, they added an aerator to it to make it healthier, and then if you had a walkway going to Kapewalk, the seniors would also be able to enjoy it. So the thought was, I was asking the board to have a acceptance of getting more information, and that would be moving this towards the Community Preservation Committee and the Open Space Committee, and also the Conservation Committee. Now, I did talk to Bob Wagner, and he mentioned that funding could be used through CPA. I talked to John Wilkes. He said you have to first determine the ownership. I talked to Jenny at the assessor's office, and Jenny said the town owns the pond. The landowners on the Main Street side own the land up to the water, but then Smith Academy owns, and the town owns the pond. So technically, the pond is ours. So we have a Conservation Committee take a look. They could probably tell us what could be done. And then Open Space might want to take this on as one of their projects because they're looking for projects, and they've been asking for projects for recreation because they're in charge of recreation and trails. So, and then if you tied it in with a little walkway, maybe a little walkover bridge to Kapewalk, the seniors could use it during the summer, and I think it has a lot of benefit, not only for the fishing game and the kids, but for the seniors and everybody in town. And Fishing Game's been doing the derby for probably 50 years for the kids in his town. It's like a, I remember it was called Poppy Thayer Derby, and I think Mike looked up at 1937, Fishing Game started in town with 200...
It started before that, but that's as far back as, I believe I have the records. I haven't gone through all of them yet, but, yeah.
Just something else to mention, the principal of the high school, he started a fly fishing club. It'd be great for them to practice casting back there and whatnot. It'd benefit them.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, the fishing derby is such a great little tradition here in town. I know my kids all won prizes different years down there, and so, but to me, this just seems like straight up a CPA project.
Very much so.
I mean, and there's a lot of CPA funds, so it's almost time for those...
The applications are available now.
Yeah, so, and I would say that they would be eligible to apply.
November 1st is the, well, if it's town-owned property, then the town would have to file the application.
File the application.
Deadline for applications is November 1st.
Oh, okay. Lydia?
You might want to just make a motion to send a letter of, like you just did for me.
Authorizing who to what?
Not authorizing, just saying that you support the...
Well, I think that would come with the application.
Well, yeah, but you have to have your letter of support when you file the application.
Right, it would, yeah, there would be a letter of support.
I agree with that, but before we get to that point, I think we still need...
I know, we need to know what the scope of the project is.
Open Space, and we need Conservation Committee, and we have to find out, you know, costs, and then we could do the application, so...
I mean, there's quite a lot to try to get done by November 1st. It might be that this is a project for next year's rounds of CPA, but, because it really should be done very thoughtfully, so that the project is done completely and in conjunction with the proposed trails at Smith Academy and what you're mentioning about Kapewalk. So rather than try to rush something in a couple of weeks, maybe it makes sense to really give it some thought. And there's also a public forum around recreation, Hatfield Recreation coming up.
Yes, October 19th, Open Space is going to present a draft copy of their updated Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Right, so I think it's a home run. There's a million great reasons to do this.
I think tonight, I would like to vote on sending, getting information from Open Space and Conservation Commission first to see, and hopefully they could get back to us within a month with information on what can be done to the pond, and if it's something that Open Space is willing to look at. So, I mean, as a board, I would first like to say, okay, can you guys get us back information within a month? And then the next step would possibly getting funding and then having the application completed for CPA and then going forward.
The funding would be the CPA. So I would suggest you maybe go to the October 19th meeting about recreation, but then also maybe schedule a time to get, or the Open Space, excuse me. But then also maybe get on one of their upcoming agendas so that we can, you can know if there's any kind of limitations there, and then come up with the full project, and, because you're gonna need price estimates and all of that, which you're not gonna be able to get all this done in a couple of weeks.
Right.
So...
Couldn't you send a letter to CPA to have a placeholder sent?
If it's definitely going to be this year, but they won't want to wait too long because they make decisions in December.
Yeah, they make their decisions. I mean, there's a lot of things to look into here.
Yeah, depending on the community preservation category that qualifies the project, there is guidance for each category.
Right, and there is a match.
Yes.
There is matching funds. You have to be, you have to prove that there's a match for CPA funding, so that's something to think about, too. You might need some time to maybe, you know, although is there a match if it's a town application?
I don't know if it's...
You don't have to have a match, okay. Well, we have some things to look into, but I am 100% supportive of this. I just don't think trying to rush it in two weeks makes sense.
No.
Because we want a project that's, like I said, thoughtful, complete, and is, you know, planned out in conjunction with some other projects that are happening.
So right now, I think we, if we give support of getting information from the Conservation Committee and Open Space, hopefully by our next meeting, that would be nice from them to see if they're also on the same page with us on this project.
And I'm assuming they'll want to talk with you about it. So I don't think we need to vote that. We just need to ask them, okay?
I'll reach out to Rich.
It has a lot of, I mean, it's a great little spot now, but it has a lot of potential.
Right, especially with Kapewalk walking there, they could...
That would be really nice.
That's relaxing for the...
Is there, there's only access to that from the Smith Academy side?
From the Smith Academy side.
Right, okay. Because if you come down Day Avenue, you have to cross private property, right?
It's private property, and every year when we have the fishing derby, we gotta knock on doors and ask permission to cross properties.
Right, right, right. But you could have the fishing derby access it from Smith Academy side, too. Okay. I think it would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It'd be really great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll see you in the next year.
Thanks again. Thanks.
Thanks. Good to see you, Michael. Okay, so topic four is some appointments and resignations. So we have...
So we received one response for the vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee, and speaking of CPC, and this is an at-large, this is a Select Board appointment.
Okay.
And Catherine Chivoli has asked to be considered fulfilling that, to be appointed to fill that vacancy.
Am I not seeing a name on this form?
No, the appointment form...
The verification of vacant position, there's no name on there.
Right, because we didn't know who it would be. We didn't know how many people would apply for the position.
So what are we signing here? Just that it's vacant?
Well, it should, no, it should...
The appointee's information will be filled in.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, we didn't...
It's, okay.
Yeah, you know, depending on the number of people that apply, you don't know...
We only had one, Catherine.
One vacancy. That was Bob Wagner's seat.
I'll make a motion to appoint Catherine Chivalry to Community Preservation Commission.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, great, so we thank he for stepping up for that. And then we have some new hires for the fire department. We don't vote these, though. We just sign these documents.
Fire chief has the authority per statute to hire.
And these are per diem employees that will be paid for shift stay pickup.
Right.
And do we have more than one?
Just one.
Just one. But then we also have...
There was, there was going to be another one, and the fire chief decided to remove it.
But then these, these other rate sheets, again, we don't, we just sign these, right?
So that was added via personnel forms. The board should vote to approve those.
Oh, we should vote.
To grant those. That was for the, yes.
So this one is just a change in title, job title for the COA?
Oh, I forgot about the COA there. Right.
So this is changing Amanda Zigmund's title, obviously...
Yes, her position has been reclassified.
Cookie's been with the town for a long time, but it's changing her from Administrative Assistant to Assistant Director.
I was aware that, yes, her position's been reclassified...
Right.
...to Assistant Director.
Good with that? I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
So you're gonna, we have to vote that one, though?
Yes.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, which, I got the right one here.
It's for Cookie. Amanda Zigmund?
That's right, okay, I got it now. I make a motion to approve Amanda Zigmund to position as Assistant Director of COA.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, I just want to say Amanda's been doing an outstanding job over the years for the COA. This is probably time, I'm glad to see her, to move to Assistant Director. She's probably been doing that position for years anyway, so...
She's given a lot of years of dedicated service to the town, so we're happy for her. So congrats to Cookie.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ed's keeping me in line. All right, so then these...
And then there were two additional ones received this morning from DPW.
And these are just salary adjustments, and one is a, no, sorry, there are two...
One is a new employee at the transfer station, correct?
Which is a wonderful addition to the transfer station. I've had the chance to chat with Mr. Jagodinsky two Saturdays in a row, and it's very nice to have him there. And then Matt Shippey would be coming on as he's, be training at the wastewater treatment plant.
Operator. It'll be nice to have a second person at the wastewater plant.
Yeah. Okay, so we should do these separately. Ed, do you want to make a motion to approve the hiring of Thomas Jagodinsky?
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire Thomas Jagodinsky to the position of transfer station. Is that, okay, because I don't have that one on my packet, so that's fine.
Okay, second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
Call those in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Shippey for a DPW wastewater operator in training.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt Shippey is an excellent employee.
Yes.
Works very, very hard. It'd be nice to have him.
And so that's all we have for topic four, it looks like?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then topic five is the DPW report. Phil, do you want to?
So you have in front of you the sewer and water billing commitment that the board has to approve, so the bill's gonna be sent out.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the commitment of water sewer billing of FY23, which is $655,332.42.
Second, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is based on usage from March or April to the end of September, or...
I think it's the beginning of September.
This is through the summer months, yes.
These summer months, okay.
Okay. Oh, we've got to sign it. Oh, there's three, three copies?
I did have that one.
I've got it.
Hmm.
Oh, you did have the other...
Yeah, I found it. Okay.
How many copies are here?
Two hundred and thirty.
Okay. Okay. We have four. It's fine. Okay, and proposed sewer water rate increase?
So Marlene and I, and Justin Scully, and Dave Prigott have been working on this for a few weeks now. So as you know, we've missed the increases, I think it's two times now, so we're two increases behind, and that became of the USDA grant where we said we were going to increase sewer and water rates on an ongoing basis.
Right, right.
At a full year.
We've missed the public hearing twice now, so we're a little bit behind, so we're looking to schedule a public hearing to...
Okay.
The rate increases.
Yeah. Okay.
To review the rates and increase them, and that was a discussion that the Select Board and Finance Committee had several years ago when...
Well, right, because we were gonna start getting into a plan of, you know, incrementally get, trying to get to where we should be because we're...
That's right.
Kind of behind.
Do you remember with the USDA grant, you had to have a certain amount...
To qualify for...
To qualify, so we don't want to fall behind again.
Right, right.
And then we weren't really covering all our operational costs either.
I mean, the responsible and prudent thing to do is to be doing these...
Annual.
More often than skipping years and then doing bigger ones.
Right, yeah, because, you know, when I first started here, they skipped five years in a row, and then you had to have the catch-up, and, you know, the big increase happened.
Yeah, I think...
It's easier to chip away at it than to have the one-time big increase.
So then let's pick a date coming up, you know, I'll leave that to your discretion, Marlene, because you...
We'll do that. I'll work with Phil.
I know there's a few things we've had to move down the road a little bit, so I have a feeling our next few meetings could be big ones. But yeah, let's do that sooner rather than later.
We'll have DPC in to answer the questions on why and...
Right.
Have the scale of why.
Yeah, I mean, and it's always helpful to have information about what, you know, the average bill, you know, what people might expect in terms of increases. I think people like that information, understandably so, so... Okay.
Any updates on 5 and 10, where, what they're doing before they...
Today, they were installing the valve for the pump station across the street where it has to go, so I expect them, they're supposed to start paving this week. So hopefully, they're gonna pave the north end first, is my understanding, from Chestnut Street down to like USA Waste.
Yeah, I spoke with a resident today. She asked, she's inquiring about when paving was going to start.
Is that the final paving, or is that just a base coat?
Final paving on the north end, then they can do the south end from where the Brook crosses to like number 44, 48, wherever.
Okay, but it's all final paving, there wouldn't be, okay.
Yep, and then we'll just see what happens.
Okay. All right, thanks. Do you have anything else for Phil?
No, I don't, I mean, that's, I mean, I know you guys are getting ready for winter now, starting to think winter, and the shed, what's the process on the shed that you guys were building off of Elm Court?
We went out, we have three quotes, and we are going to accept the lowest quote for the building, so I know that Laurie has sent some information, Town Administrator Way.
I did a contract beginning of September for a vendor for the materials.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that's the route we're going with the canvas shed.
Okay, there isn't any other contract. I haven't received any other documents.
It just started last week, and you were off, so they're Friday.
I wasn't here on Friday yet.
Friday, yeah, so, but, yeah, I mean, we cleared the site. We have the fence up, the trees are down, so we're, you know, we're ready to go. Just a matter of the building, and the building is 12 weeks out, so, and the other update would be School Street paving is supposed to be done October 18th, that week of October 18th, so...
Okay, and there'll be notices sent out so people know what, because School Street is a busy street for obvious reasons. Might be good for, to give some notice to people about that.
I just want to make sure the date's confirmed before we notify people.
Right. I would maybe see if even the school could send something out, because even the, you know, people who aren't gonna get the robo-calls if they're choice families, and it might be, so...
That'd be a good idea.
If you could coordinate that with Connor, that would be good, just...
And upstairs bathroom? We got quotes, the guy...
So I did receive the quote later Thursday, so we're just pretty well set to go. I just have some things I want to go over with you, and I was gonna share with you, Ed, because I know you've been involved in that, so...
Okay. Friday, Friday, all the windows, screens will be washed in Kapewalk.
Good, good.
Awesome.
So nice stuff.
And we are accepting, we, I put out the quotes for the painting of the trim, so we've had a couple people respond.
Wow, that's good that you're getting quotes, because I know it's really hard to...
It is hard.
Get estimates and quotes these days, so...
People are busy, you know, everybody wants to do it next year, but, you know, I'm trying to get at least part of the building, the front, done this year, so we'll see.
Okay, well, thanks for that, Phil. Anything else, Ed?
No, you have anything for us?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you for the appointments within the department. We were lucky enough to find two individuals, you know, that were, especially at the wastewater plant, I mean, that's a hard position, you know. It's a very hard position to fill, so...
Yeah.
He did his diligence by going out and passing the test, so why not?
No, that's great. Yeah. All right, thank you very much, Phil. Marlene, discussion of reinstating annual license fees?
The last two years, the Select Board has waived those liquor, well, it's not just liquor, it's all the license renewals for the upcoming new calendar year. And so notifications will be going out to all the license holders and like to ask the board what you'd like to do. Would you like to reinstate the fees? So it's been a loss of those revenues for the last two years. It's been about, what was it, between...
14,000, I think. I mean, I think it's, I think now is an okay time to reinstate those fees. You know, businesses are back open, there's no restrictions on their operations or anything like that. I think that the town, you know, did that to be supportive of our businesses when they were really struggling with shutdowns and everything that we've all experienced for the last two and a half years. But everybody seems to be, you know, up and running, well, the ones that are up and running are up and running, you know, with regular, normal hours. So I think it's at this point, my feeling is at this point, it's fair to reinstate those licenses. I was really happy to be able to do that for them for a couple of years and support those businesses. But I think now is an appropriate time.
I'm happy we're able to support them and I think it's also time. So I'll make a motion to reinstate the license fees.
I'll second that. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our budget was built on reinstating those at the levels that they were before, right? So we haven't increased them or anything in several years.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Next item, just quickly, disbursement of National Opioid Crisis Funds. If you remember, the Attorney General Office, Massachusetts Attorney General's Office spearheaded a lawsuit against two pharmaceutical companies and there was a settlement. And pretty much every community in the Commonwealth, you know, applied for funding. And I've had conversations with the police chief and the Board of Health and I believe I may have shared this previously. So both the police chief and the Board of Health would like to use those funds for educational purposes. However, so we've already received, we just received a second installment. The funds have to be appropriated at town meeting. They don't just go into an account that's set up specific for that. So at the next town meeting, we would appropriate the funds for a specific purpose, for educational purposes, if that's what the board supports. So I just wanted to bring that attention.
Can you just refresh my memory, how much money we get?
Well, the amount of money has, it differs. There's an allotment, but then the lawyer's office that is processing and handling all this, they collect administrative fees. So each community is not receiving the full amount that, you know, was allocated.
So does this law office handle all the grant reporting?
I believe so.
I mean, I'd like to know what they're doing to get any administrative fees for this. I would hope that it means you don't have to do any reporting.
As far as I don't, I would expect that they would probably want to hear from communities what the money's been spent for. But as far as, my understanding is that law office is handling everything.
Interesting.
Well, we'll just move it to town meeting. We have to do something at town meeting with it.
If we want to use the funds for...
Educational purposes.
Are we racking 5,000, 25,000? Like I can't ballpark it.
Yeah, I think it was around 23,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
In all education, no like Narcan, no, is, can it be used for things like that?
Yeah, to purchase like, yes.
Narcan or Narcan training and that sort of thing?